Good morning and welcome to the January 8th, 2025 City Council Meeting. Happy New Year. And we're going to begin with the dedication followed by the pledge of police standing. Dear Homicide Father, I just thank you for today. I thank you for everyone that's here. I thank you for our first responders and water utilities, traffic, streets, and everyone that's going to be out and about the next couple of days. Just keep everyone safe and be with all the people that live here that everybody is safe as well. Just hope and pray that this event is a non-event. So just thank you for everyone that's here. Thank you for this day in your son's name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got the minutes from October the 16th, 2024, and also October 23rd, 2024. We need to approve this presented.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Winn, second by McKellar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. P-1.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Nicole Johnson. I'm the Municipal Court Administrator and I'm here regarding Council Item P-1. The court contracted with the Purdue firm for collection services in 2019. Since that time, we've been able to collaborate and work through various collection procedures. This step, after many steps, is the final attempt to encourage compliance in the court and is critical to our process. Today, I'm requesting that you hear a presentation from Purdue's managing partner, Mr. Patrick Woods, regarding our successes over the past five years.
Thank you, Nicole. I want to thank Mayor Warren, the Council, Mr. Bressard. Thank you for having me. My name is Patrick Woods and I'm a partner at the Pu Brandon Law Firm. The one thing that I want to speak to you about today, and I'm going to move through it as quickly as I can, is I want to give you a report on the delinquent court fines and fees collections program that we currently have going on at the municipal court. So first, I want to do say Nicole is an awesome employee. I know you know that. We work with her directly in this program. She's the court administrator, as you know, and we couldn't ask for a better partner in this program than Nicole. So I want to brag on her for a second. Of course, Judge McCullough and Judge Hewler are wonderful as well. So I'm going to move into the report here that you have in front of you. Who are we? So obviously, I'm the managing partner here at Purdue. We also have Patrick McArthur here with us. Patrick's a partner with the law firm. Andy LaSalle-Hugman, who is our attorney in our Longview office, and Doug Burnside, of course, our managing partner Garland, who some of you have met as well. We're the lawyers and the partners that are the project managers on this account. We make sure everything's running smoothly. We interact with the court when we need to, the city attorney's office when we need to, and Kedrick. So that's kind of the team that we focus on with this program. We'll move to the next slide. These are really the team members that make it work, that work with Nicole and the court dealing with invoicing issues, collections issues, and specific issues as they come up with accounts. But once again, what do we really do, and these team members make it happen, is any ticket, any traffic violation, or any type of fine that comes through municipal court, once it's 60 days past due, it's turned over to us. And these are large volumes of cases. So these team members make sure that we get the cases, they're put into our system so that we can begin working on that, driving these individuals who owe this debt to the municipal court back to the court for that resolution. So I want to say that. Next slide. Who are we? You've partnered with us. We've been working for you for four years, but I think you know a little bit about us and I want to tell you. Look, our mission statement is quite clear: to ensure that every community has the resources to prosper. I am a hometown Tyler kid, so is Patrick McArthur. We were born and raised here in Tyler, and it's not lost on us that every dollar counts to our city. And we want to see you guys prosperous, and every dollar that we can possibly bring in is important to you. So that's part of our mission statement and it's important to us. Our core values. Look, our core values are not something just to gloss over. They are really who we are as a law firm. We've been around since 1970, and we do one thing: we collect government receivables for cities, counties, and school districts. So our first core value there of people first is similar to the first core value of the city of Tyler: people first. Anytime we interact with somebody who owes a debt to the Tyler Municipal Court, we always make sure that we would act in a way that you would want us to, with professionalism, with integrity, honesty, compassion. So that's not lost on us, that people first is important to you and it's also important to our law firm. Okay, let's move to the next slide. This really is the heart of what I want to talk about, and I want us to concentrate here for a few minutes. Now, how many cases in the past four years could you think have been turned over to us? Delinquent fines owed to the court? Over 70,000 cases. So that's that first number there. Now, that's a large volume. You have a large municipal court moving tons of cases and tons of accounts. So that's a big number, just if you didn't know it. So the next is what we're still working. What's outstanding of those 70,000 accounts? 37,000. That's what we're still working and actively trying to engage in. We are reaching out to these folks with phone calls, with letters, soon-to-be text messages. We are doing whatever we can to locate them, to drive them back to the court to resolve that case, okay? What does that mean in terms of dollars? And that's really what we need to focus on. So the total turnover to our firm has been $5.5 million, okay? That's what we've been tasked to collect. In the next line, that $3.1 million number, that's what we've liquidated off of the delinquent role for the court. So that $3.1 million we need to focus on there, that includes both cash resolutions, people that come and just pay the fine, and noncash resolutions. As you know, folks that owe a debt to the municipal court that can sit it out in jail, that debt can go away sitting out in jail time. It can also be resolved with a reduction. Oftentimes defendants will do community service to reduce their fine. So we have cash and noncash included in that liquidated amount, but that is what has come off the roll. What do we have total outstanding to still collect? $2.3 million. So we're still actively working that, and of course, we're getting more and more cases every month. Your total collection percentage, if you walk away with anything today, you should know this number, is 57%. That's the collection percentage that we have cleared off of the delinquent role at the court. Industry standard is about 30% to 35%. This is a very important account to us. Like I said, it's our hometown and it's a really big account for our office. We put a ton of resources into this account to make sure that it's well above and beyond the industry standard. So your collection percentage is at 57%. It's really great, really healthy. We feel good about it. So I'll pause there. This is really what I came to talk to you about today. I'll pause there if there are any questions. I could answer anything, but these are the dollar amounts that we're working with.
So how do y'all get paid?
It's a great question, Mr. Mayor. So we get paid a contingency fee. It does not come out of the defendant's end, of the city's end. It's a contingency fee of 30%, and that is set by statute. So if somebody owes City of Tyler $100, it's not you take 70, we take 30. That debt turns into $130. So it's 30% add-on fee to whatever the defendant owes the court. And again, that's, Mr. Mayor, that's set by statute. We can't go below it or above it. 30% is the penalty.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned that they could sit it out in jail, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So how do you collect money when they're sitting in jail? I mean, you know they can't pay if they're not working, right?
Sure, sure.
So why would we put them all in jail instead of...
You know, I think that's another great question, Ms. McKellar. You know, that decision is made internally with our judges and our prosecutors. That doesn't necessarily come down to me, but if somebody's sitting it out in jail, I would imagine that was a decision made by the court, not me. Of course, we would love to collect the money for the city, but I think it's an interesting point that you raise. Yes, ma'am.
And one of the things that Nicole maybe, well, I know is a better provider of us an answer than I will be, but one of the things our judges do is they actually will, you know, jail is the last resort. There are a number of people who will actually try to be able to send out, take their time in jail versus having to do community service or pay. And our judges, especially over probably the past eight years or so, have gotten very good at saying, you know, we will figure out some type of payment plan or community service time, including expansion of what counts as community service in order to keep them from jail. At one time, our number, our rate had dropped, how many people were going to jail based upon municipal court fines. The county was trying to figure out why all of a sudden they saw a decrease in the population at the jail coming from the city, and it was because of the work that we had done in putting that as community service, like I said, or payment plans, more kind of extended out payment plans.
So if someone has community service and there's no revenue created because they're in community service, do they have to pay 30%?
No, it's provided with community service credit. So they'll get community service credit for anything that they have outstanding.
Look, Mr. Mayor, that debt still comes off of the roll. Once they sit it out, it's no longer considered a debt owed to the court because that would be zeroed out, whatever that sum was.
And also in relationship to the jail, the jail's, one of the big reasons also the jail is kind of the last resort for us, if anything, is the city actually has to pay while that person is in jail. So there actually is a cost to the city for them to be in jail beyond the fact that we're not collecting in relation to a fine, they're sitting out that time in jail. So jail is, for the judges, like I said, the very last resort that they will go to.
I want to add that also in 23, the requirement for jail time credit, they may not be in jail on our cases, but if they're in prison or in jail on other cases in other counties but unrelated to the court, we're required to give that community service credit. So many times, we're not jailing them for their offense in our court. We're just giving them credit for time that they've done on other cases.
Thank you.
I think that last point Nicole made there is a good one, yes. Okay, so if there are no questions here, I'll move on and I want to just, these are just kind of these last two slides, fun slides to include for you. So when we get the information, we are using some really great skip tracing software to find these defendants throughout the country. So, you know, we've sent, we called on 14,000 phone calls. We made 14,000 phone calls. We've mailed 68,000 letters, and we've changed a number of addresses and phone numbers. When we get the information, we are doing the very best we can to find them, update it with a really good phone number and an address if we don't have it. But this is a really good place for me to brag on somebody. Tyler Police Department does an absolutely fantastic job. They are the first point of contact at a traffic stop. There are a myriad of things are going through their minds when they make a traffic stop, but one of the things is they are trying to get the very best information that they possibly can for our court. A good address, the law requires us to upgrade, update our addresses, but we know that doesn't happen sometimes. They're trying to get the best address and phone number that they can so that the court, and then ultimately us, if they go delinquent, can contact them and get this debt paid. So a good shout out to them because they do a great job and we don't have to do it near as much as we should. So I want to just highlight that. Text messaging campaign will come in 2025, so in addition to these metrics that we can reach out to defendants with, a text message on their phone, golly, it's so easy to just send that, hey, you owe a debt to the city of Tyler. We think it's going to really help. We'll move on to the next slide and I'll wrap it up. This is just a fun thing we include. We find people all over that owe debts to the city of Tyler. They come through on 69 or wherever and they end up wherever, and we find them and we get them to pay. We drive them to the court so they can resolve it. One thing that we do every spring, you should know, is we have a case resolution campaign. If you do have a warrant at city court, it's called the old warrant roundup. We don't really call it that anymore, but case resolution is a way that we reach out, we provide some language, amnesty language, we want a postcard, whatever, saying, hey, you really need to resolve this warrant. Your debt is really piling up. Please fix this. And so that's coming in the spring, and we do that every year in conjunction with the Texas Marshals Association. It's a really great program and we do resolve a lot of accounts with the court there. I just want to end it there. That's my last slide. And just say thank you. We've really enjoyed the opportunity to represent the city of Tyler, and this has been a great program and a great opportunity for us. And so, you know, at the end today, you may consider an extension, certainly here, to answer any questions about that, and we'd love to continue to work for you.
So when you send out letters?
Yes.
Do you have different colored letters based on severity of the issue?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
Can you explain the different colors?
The color actually changes every year. So, you know, a yellow means, hey, look, you're in some warm zone here. If we send you a red one, it's bad. It means you got to pay it right now.
Sometimes I don't think people realize the color has a significance.
Uh huh, okay. Well, the language gets harsher, I believe, in the letter, so.
Nothing I've got. How did you know that?
We've all been there, it's okay.
Any questions for Patrick?
Thank you, Patrick.
Appreciate it.
My pleasure. Thank you so much.
All right, M-1.
Larry. Good morning, Mayor and Council members.
Good morning.
My name is Larry Everett. I'm with the Community Development Manager with Neighborhood Services Department here in the neighborhood of the city. What I want to talk about is a follow-up, M-1 is a follow-up of a home art program. This is a follow-up. We presented this in 2023, and now we've gotten everything coupled with HUD, so we're kind of moving forward with the program itself. And basically, what we've done so far at this point is we found some homes that we're going to utilize with this, with the funding that we received from HUD. And these are the two homes that's located on 32nd Street. You're looking at 512 West 32nd and 516 West 32nd. They're right there together. And basically, the proposal is utilizing the units for those people that are homeless. In other words, those people that meet the qualifying population that are required to be homeless, and then we can provide those temporary shelters for them to move forward from their standpoint. So any questions about the home art program as we move forward?
So who's going to actually manage? Say you've got a group of homeless people and you're trying to vet them to see who's going to live in here and how long they're going to live in here.
Right.
Do they have dogs, not have dogs? Who's going to administer the program?
We will be coordinated with the social service agency, East Texas Carers, where they will go in and also accommodate in terms of, identify those people that meet the qualification, and then they'll run the day-to-day operations in terms of facilitating what needs to be done and what needs to happen during that time. Keep in mind, this is temporary. This is not, this won't be a permit, so it's off a point where they will be coming in temporarily till they get on their feet and move forward, and then we'll bring someone else in to try to keep the cycle going from that standpoint. And then I will be actually overseeing with East Texas Carers in terms of how I report those items, because I have to report them back to HUD in terms of what we're doing with the funding at this point. And as you see, there's the interior location of the units, and they're all, each one has five bedrooms and three bathrooms, and there's enough space to kind of keep going from that standpoint. Mostly, we're looking at individual families because families seem to be the caveat that we're finding a lot of, and then we also have the opportunity to use them for individuals also. And as I said here, it's going to be temporary shelter funded through the home art program. And we're calling these non-congregates shelters, and this was all identified through the American Rescue Plan that the federal government has set up. And so they provide those funding funds for us to be able to utilize them in a certain aspect, and that's why we're kind of stringent in terms of how we use those programs and use the funding for those programs. And when we said non-congregates shelters, that means that they're individual shelters, more or less than a big hall that all people gathered in at one time. So that's kind of what that means from that standpoint. And one of the areas that we have to look at is it's going to have to be qualifying populations, not just for everyone. We have four items, four identified populations that we have to look at. It's an individual who lacks fixed regular income, and then a family who do not have the resources, and then, of course, we look at those that are in imminent danger, whether they're in any type of threatening condition, and then a household that has annual income below 30% of AMI. And so we looked at those four items, and then those are how we select the individuals that we will have in contact for this service. And then these are some of the items that, as I said earlier, that East Texas Carers will be looking at. They'll be actually serving those people, and they'll actually provide meals through their food pantry program, and then they have a case manager that will stay in touch with what they're doing and how they're doing it, if they are moving forward, to be able to move forward to something that's going to be more secure for them. And I request that the city council consider adopting the transfer of properties of 412 West 32nd and 516 West 32nd to the East Texas Carers Resource Center to carry out the day-to-day functions and provide a temporary shelter for the families, adults, and individuals at risk of becoming homeless based on the qualifying population addressed by the Department of Urban Development. And also consider approval of the resolution that should be in the program instead of the ordinance. We'll have to make that correction, Mayor.
Well, first, I want to say, Larry, thank you for your group that's worked on this. I'm not sure how it all came together, and it doesn't matter because the end result is the homeless folks are going to have somewhere to go, another option. And so, yeah, I'm very thankful for that. So thank you. If anybody had a question.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Two things. We talked about the privacy fence for those two properties.
Yes.
Where are we with that?
Well, we want to get approval by council first. And once we do approval by council, we'll know to start moving forward with other issues there from that standpoint. So that will be going forward as we move forward to the next step.
Okay. The second question is, how do we find these people? Will they be people from under the bridge, or will they be people that we've already earmarked that we know is homeless or about to be homeless?
No, we will find them because they have to come in and qualify. They're not just going to come in and just, we just say we're going to give them a residence to live in for a few days, but they have to qualify based on those qualifying, the full qualifying populations. And once they're screened by the East Texas Carers, and then they would qualify, we'll send them through. If not, then we cannot move forward with them because it's very, it's very critical that we have to stay on course with that because that's the way they're going to move forward with, when I say they, HUD is going to move forward with a continuum of funding for us at this point.
So we'll advertise these two properties, and that's how we're going to find the people?
Or is that the responsibility of East Texas Carers?
Yeah, that's, yeah, I was going to say, that's going to be responsible to East Texas Carers to follow through with that part in terms of, and we have representatives here that, with East Texas Carers, and once we get everything moving forward, we'll start meeting and come up with strategies in terms of how we're going to bring those people forward. And advertising possibly might be some of it, but we're limiting the number of people that we can help at this time.
Can we have the folks from East Texas Carers Resource Center come up? Put it here?
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning. Can you state your name and address for the record?
I'm Jeanette Deans Calhoun, and I'm the Executive Director, CEO of East Texas Carers Resource Center.
I recognize you.
Oh, my goodness.
Can you tell us a little bit about your group and what y'all do, and have y'all been doing this? Just tell us about your group.
Sure. We've been doing this since 18, excuse me, 1989, 1989, and our services to the community have expanded. We began with providing services to the community when persons in our community were being diagnosed with a virus that we just didn't have the information on. So we started out providing services to people that were living with what we now know was AIDS, HIV, and we've expanded our services. We provide housing. We assist with social work. We have a social work manager, and we are supported through grants, and we have a pantry, and we provide services to persons that participate in our HEA program, which is a health assistance program which provides support for insurance premiums. We pay co-pays. We pay deductibles for persons that are living with HIV, and we are, we're, this is another facet, and this, someone asked the question, where did this come from, why? We get calls all day long. This community gets calls all day long from persons that are asking for resources to help them with paying their rent, just to bridge them for that one month. And unfortunately, we cannot provide that kind of service for those persons, and we also get calls from people that are in a domestic violence situation, and after being served by a sister agency that provides shelter for families, then they need to move on. So what we are focusing on is this. We not only want to bring people in that are facing homelessness, that are homeless, that might have children, that they're walking with in the cold and in the dark and in danger, we want to, and we will, we have a council, and that council will be added to, but we are working with a council that will vet people, that will come in, and these people will, with the council's assistance, will develop a rehabilitation program. We will determine what they need to make them whole, and we will help them if it's a job and having enough monies to save so that they can pay their first month's rent, their last month's rent, so that they can move in with their children. We will provide them with an opportunity to be there so that they can make this happen. So we're trying to build parents, and we have another program called Parents Connect, and this is the program that will support parents and give them the tools that they need to be a better parent and to keep their families together. We're going to, because we have two homes, we're going to serve families first, and we're going to serve single women, because it would be, in our judgment, a very difficult thing to have men and women in the same property. The other thing is, we're going to have to provide security. So that means we're going to have to procure the services of a security company that will drive around, that will stop their vehicles, that will walk, and so these people have to be safe. We will have cameras in those areas where we will not threaten their privacy, and we will provide them with food. This will not be a place where they can come and sit all day and watch the stories. No. We're going to get them active. We're going to get them moving. We're going to make them productive citizens.
Great.
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. McKellen? One more, you want to speak?
No, it's Dr. McKellen.
Dr. McKellen, sorry. Any other questions? All right. Did you make the motion?
I make the motion that we accept M-1 as presented by Mr. Everett.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion by McKellar, second by Winn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all so much, Dr. McKellen.
Thank you.
All right, M-2.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. My name is Jacob Yankar with Tyler Water Utilities, and I'm going to be presenting Items M-2 and M-3 today. So starting with M-2, for the 2024 Water Main Improvements 2-Inch Replacement, the Construction Award, bid number 24040, and this is to CAPS, Capco Construction. So back in March, City Council approved an engineering contract with Elitch Engineering for the 2-Inch Replacement Project. And we're going to be focusing on two areas of town, the West Elm and the Mahone Areas, both inside the Loop around Central Tyler. You can see the list of streets here that we'll be replacing the 2-Inch Water Manes on, and this list of streets actually came right from the overlay list that engineering does. And so they're going to be postponing these streets until we get the water mains replaced and then overlay them, I believe, in 2026 is what the schedule is right now. So the scope for this project, we'll be replacing around 10,000 feet of 2-Inch galvanized water line with new 6-Inch PVC line. We'll be replacing and installing 17 fire hydrant assemblies. We'll be reconnecting 140 water services. We have a railroad and a tech stop permit with the dry bore. We have concrete and asphalt removal and pavement repair, and a 12-month construction contract, or construction schedule, excuse me. So sealed bids were opened on November 26, 2024, and we received six bids, as seen here. The low bidder was CAPS, Capco Construction, coming in just under $2 million. CAPS is on the approved contractor list for the city of Tyler, and we actually have current utility projects that are ongoing with them, and they've been performing And they've been performing, they've been performing well on all those projects. There's been no quality issues or schedule concerns. It's been recommended by our consultant to move forward with the low bidder. So I would like to request that the City Council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a CIP construction contract with CAPS, Capco Construction for the 2024 water main improvement two-inch replacement project in the amount of $1,813,982, and adopt a resolution reserving the right to reimburse expenditures with proceeds of future debt.
Jacob, are any of these on the brick streets?
No, sir.
Great. Any questions?
Yeah, what is it about the two-inch lines? I mean, is there something inherent in that, or they just happened to all be two-inch lines?
So a lot of the two-inch lines were, were installed back in, back to the 30s, 40s, 50s. And a lot of them are galvanized, and so that pipe material just doesn't hold up over time. It's also a small volume of water that it can transfer, so we're going to be upsizing the diameter of the pipe. So the residents will actually see better pressure in these areas.
Move to approve M2.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by Nichols, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, M3.
M3, so this is another water distribution capital improvement project. So this is for the engineering services with CT Brandon Corp. for the 2024-2025 large water main replacement. And this is going to be in the plantation area and on North Palace Avenue. So there's approximately 750 miles of pipe for the water distribution system in the city of Tyler. And this network of piping consists of different pipe materials from cast iron, ductile iron, AC pipe, and PVC. And all those pipes are in different soil conditions, which, which affect how that pipe ages. And like I said earlier, some of these pipes are dating back to the 30s, to 1930s and before. So back in fall of 2023, the City Council received a presentation on the Water Master Plan. And in that master plan, it identified an asset management plan, and also identified some of the high-risk assets that we have. So what we've done for this package is we've taken that list of high-risk assets, and we've broken them out to this, this replacement plan. So the plantation area, you can see the roads that we're going to be working on here. We're going to be replacing six, eight, and 12-inch water lines in this area. This area actually has very corrosive soil, and that's the main problem that we've seen here, is that soil is corroding the pipe and causing main break failures. North, North Palace, we're going to be replacing just over 1,000 feet of six-inch water line between MLK and West Vance. And since 2000, so this is around 10,000 feet of water line that we'll be replacing. And since 2017, we've seen approximately 25 main breaks on, on this 10,000 feet of water main. So that's why it's such a high risk in our condition assessment for these areas. We have a pre-engineering cost estimate of $2 million for this, for this project. So with that, I'd like to request that the City Council consider authorizing the city manager to execute an engineering services contract in the amount of $168,550 with the CT Brandon Corporation for the design and construction phase services for the 2024-2025 large water main replacement in plantation area in North Palace Avenue project, and adopt a resolution reserving the right to reimburse expenditures with proceeds of future debt.
Let me ask, Jacob, when you talk about the, to pay for this with proceeds of future debt, when is that going to occur? Has it occurred? Is that part of what we already taken on with the consent decree?
So this is going to be non-regulatory bond funds? Sorry?
No, 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 it's, you're actually doing a much better job than I thought it was going to do. So yeah, for the two pieces, one is the, this isn't involved with a consent decree because it's water main projects, not on the wastewater side. And so typically, what you'll see, though, is for, you know, just, you know, my technical, my, my kind of general answer for this one before Jacob kind of does the specific answer. We always make sure we have this language in here in the case that as we look at these projects and the funding of these projects, that you have then the capacity to go out for debt, and you didn't restrict yourself to just as far as using your straight revenue that's coming in as cash. And so that's, that's to kind of give you the wiggle room for that. Now, having said that, Jacob was going into a very technical answer that I stopped that I'm going to go back to. Hit it.
I think, I think you did great, yeah.
Oh, well, still.
Yeah, so it's a catch-all.
I got one question, Don. Jacob, you said the, the area, the plantation area, the soil there is very corrosive. What makes that soil in that part of the city more corrosive than other? Is it?
It, it's just how the, the geotechnical properties of the soil in that particular area work. There's really nothing that, that we can do to, to prevent that. What we do nowadays is if it's ductile pipe, we would wrap it in a poly, polymer wrap to prevent corrosion. But we're putting in PVC pipe, so corrosion's not going to be a concern in, in that area moving forward.
So just for whatever reason, that part of Tyler's got more acidic soil than other areas, so it's, you should grow great there.
Yep, yep, that's right.
All right, any other questions for Jacob?
Move to approve M3.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McKeller, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jacob. B1, Cassandra, is that you?
Yes, sir.
You want to come up?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm coming to you today, back in September when we had the board appointment process. The Construction Board of Adjustments was one of the boards that we didn't receive enough applications for. So I'm coming back to you at this time requesting that the City Council consider making several appointments to the Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals. We received seven applications, so I'm just asking for your appointment at this time.
Do we have that list?
Yes, sir. In front of you, we have Aaron Paul, Chris Moore, Fred Pate, John Deeks, John McKinney, Laquita Hill, and Max Slicker.
And some of those are, have already been on the board and are reappointments, correct?
Yes, well, we haven't had an appointment to this board, I know, in a while, since maybe '22, '23. So all those individuals on this board has had a break of service. So they're able to come back and serve their full term. And this board is one of those that we have kind of a technical expertise that we need. So that's the reason why sometimes we don't receive enough applications. So it's more than advisories, so we look for professional, design professionals, contractors, or in the building industry so that, because they do a lot of technical codes and approved building codes.
I have a question. Are you asking us to approve all of those persons that you just named out?
Yes, ma'am. So that we'll have a full board.
Any other questions for Cassandra?
Need to approve?
Second.
Got a motion by Nichols, second by Curtis, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're down to the consent agenda, and when approved, it's provided.
Move to approve, consent agenda is written.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McKeller, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City managers, report.
Mayor and Council, just a couple of items of note. The first of which is, we are monitoring the weather conditions. It does look as though, you know, at this time, but who knows where it may have, the day may change, that we won't be getting necessarily the severe weather that we may have anticipated at the beginning of the week, but it's still as far as it's cold, and we want to make sure people are careful as we continue to have kind of freezing temperatures going into the weekend. So please continue to monitor social media, we'll put out notifications there to help people kind of with their preparation and what they need to know as weather conditions continue. The other thing is, this also is a great opportunity to plug our rave alert system, and so that people can be able to kind of stay plugged in through direct messages that we can send through their phone in order to be able to let them know about weather conditions and also opportunity or options they have, especially as weather gets cold, perhaps of heating centers, that type of stuff comes up. This is, I'm talking to Chief Kogle yesterday as we were doing some prep on this. He reminded the group that this is only probably the first of winter storms that we'll be getting this winter. So it is a great opportunity to take this opportunity, time to get yourself ready for what will continue through that. And then it'll be tornado season before you know it, so even more of a reason to be registered for the rave alert system. And also.
Ed, where are you going? How did somebody get signed up for that?
You can first go to our, the best place to go is probably to our social media, our Facebook pages, for example, where we have the ability for you to kind of directly then go and register for it in that system to be able to get that, then, the notifications. You can also go to our website, where we'll have information on registering for the rave alert. Downtown, as far as reconstruction, y'all have seen the huge crane for the courthouse go up. And with that, we'll also be continuing to prepare for just the kind of disruption as we rebuild and make downtown even better for our citizens and constituents. But one of the things we're doing to make sure that for everybody, to, as we look to see how can we help ease kind of the burden for our businesses there and for all that's going on, is for our meters that we have around the square, we'll be making that for like the first two hours is free for usage there in order to encourage people to come downtown, as well as to make sure that they have that opportunity for parking. And so that is one of the things that we've just rolled out in order to help with that. We'll probably see more things as we look to see how we can make sure that, again, that our businesses are, we're making, encouraging people to come downtown to frequent the businesses as you see construction and the disruption that goes with that going on over the next couple of years. And then finally, even though it seems like Christmas was a year ago, I do want to go ahead and tell this kind of wonderful story that, that our police department was involved in. It's called Operation Christmas Card. And Officer Carey Long helps kind of put this on with our Crow Unit, the Tyler Police Department. And this year, officers and animal control signed and delivered 2,578 Christmas cards and stuffed animals to nursing homes and special needs adults in the Tyler area. The residents were so happy to get the cards and stuffed animals. They were short on cards, and Cumberland Academy, Cumberland Elementary School helped make some of the cards for us to give out this year. Smith County Courthouse and PD dispatchers helped sign the cards as well. Next year, we hope to get more city departments in on the program. We tell people this could be the only thing a person gets for Christmas, especially in those nursing homes and special needs adults that we have in the community. So why not make their holiday a little bit better? And so if you'd like to donate unused Christmas cards for next year, please let Chief Toler or an officer long know, and they'll take those and be able to use that to spread joy for Christmas 2025. And this is really an incredible program that they do of where they take just the Christmas cards that you have left over or didn't use, and they then sign them, I'm sure I had an officer there sign quite a few Christmas cards to, just to share the love during the season to those who are shut in or not have people there to be able to help. And so this is just, just a wonderful thing that our, our Crow Unit does, and animal control was also heavily involved. And so just a great, as far as just kind of Christmas sharing of talents and time that they get.
All right, anybody have anything?
Yes, Mr. City Manager, I think I read something about free parking downtown Tyler.
Yes. So for two hours, you have, for the two hours, you can have the, for the free parking downtown on the square to help that out, so. That was, and like I said, you'll probably see more as we look to, you know, this will be new territory for all of us as reconstruction goes on of just where's there's opportunities to kind of help the businesses better down there.
So are we going to mark the tires and all that, give tickets so that Patrick and those guys can earn their money?
We'll talk about that later, sir.
All right. Also, I want to thank Tom Trimple with Encore in Advance, always for being here. And if, what you do during the winter storms, thanks for being accessible.
Happy New Year, everyone.
All right. Anything else? I understand the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right.